Welcome everyone out to our Layton City Council meeting, June 3rd. The start time is 7:03. Those in the audience would like to welcome me here tonight as well. We'll go ahead and start our meeting now with a prayer and a pledge which is going to be offered by Councilmember Morris.
Please rise and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Our kind Father in Heaven, we gather this evening as citizens of this great community, grateful for the blessings that we enjoy here in our community. We are grateful also for the freedoms that we enjoy that come from the... grateful for those that support our city, our first responders, and those that take care of the services for our quality of life. We are grateful for them and ask that thou continue to watch over and bless and protect them. Please bless us also, Father, in this meeting, that thy Spirit will be here, that we will be able to be wise and conscientious in decisions that will be made this evening for the city. We also, at this time, Father, pray united in prayer and faith with those in our community and here in our state as we struggle through this drought, that thou would please bless us with rain to be able to have the water resources necessary to take care of our needs. Again, we are grateful for this opportunity to meet this evening and these things we pray for and do in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Morris. Okay, Council, we have several sets of meetings, minutes from our meetings that we need to approve, so I'd look for some action on those.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the following minutes. Layton City Council Work Meeting of March 4th, 2021, the City Council Meeting of March 18th, 2021, the Council Meeting of April 15th, 2021, the Council Meeting of May 6th, 2021, and the Council Meeting of May 20th, 2021, as written.
Okay, Council, is there any corrections that you have? I have one small one, Kim, and it was due to my error. It was on the May 6th minutes... no, excuse me. It's on page 2, and on there, I talked about Layton Elementary and that Councilmember Thomas had joined me, and it was actually Councilmember Day. So I think that's really the only thing I noticed. Yeah.
Can you make that correction?
Yeah, because I always called Tom Thomas. So it was my... like I said, it's my error there.
I can make that correction.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll look for a second on those minutes.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Okay, we'll now move on to our municipal events and announcements. So, Council, do any of you have any information you'd like to share?
Yeah. People have been asking about the 4th of July. We're still going to have a 4th of July, and then there'll be a 5th, and a 6th, and a 7th. Never mind. The 4th of July will be actually celebrated on the 5th, which is a Monday. On Sunday, we have Voices of Liberty, which is in the amphitheater at 7 o'clock, and we bring up our hometown heroes. And on the 3rd, we're having a bunch of stuff out in the park here celebrating our centennial. So you get three days of fun, or two, or one, whatever you want to do. But just be aware that if you miss the fireworks this year, you'll probably miss the best fireworks ever, because we're throwing together the old... the centennial, the last year's, this year's. So there'll probably be at least three or four minutes of fireworks, so other than that, I think we'll be fine.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have anything I want to report?
I'll go ahead and add more to the park stuff. Friday nights are now free movies in the park. If you go to the city's website, it'll... under parks, it'll bring up what they are. And then the Arts Council has, on Sunday night as well, free family concerts. And the nice thing about the concerts this year on Sunday night, as my understanding is, is they're all acts that have not previously been here before, so that's exciting. We get to... I'll miss some of the old ones, but it'll be nice to see new talent.
And then, Madam Mayor, Davis Arts Council's first concert is June 15th, so that's on a Tuesday, right?
It's during the week.
Yep, it's on a Tuesday, first concert, and it's Everly Set. So you can pay tickets with Davis Arts Council.
And then, one other thing that I think that some folks might be interested in is, you know, in the past, they've had the Sounds of Freedom Car Show, and this year, they are going to continue with that. It will be a one-day event, and it will be just prior to Father's Day, so it'll be June 15th. So, excuse me.
Saturday.
It's a Saturday, the 19th, yes. So that will take place as well. And, one last thing. This whole month is basically Adopt a Pet Month from the Davis County Animal Shelter. So anyone who would be interested in maybe adopting a pet, they have plenty of them up there. They also have a program where you could go up and take an animal out for a walk, just to kind of help get them exercised. So I'd highly encourage anyone, if you're looking for activities for your kids or curious about adopting a pet, that's... they have that going on, and they're waiving some of the fees, I think. Okay, that's all I have. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. We'll then go on to our verbal petition, and I'll... where's my... I left it in the other room. Thanks. We do actually have one verbal petition this month, which I think is a very, I guess, it's something that we all need to be aware of and help participate in, and it's on post-traumatic stress disorder. So I'll go ahead and read that proclamation. Whereas, post-traumatic stress syndrome, or PTSD, impacts millions of people from all walks of life, including members of military, first responders, victims of crimes, and others exposed to overwhelming stressful life experiences. And whereas, the national care for post-traumatic stress disorder has designated June as PTSD Awareness Month. And whereas, the designation brings this issue to our collective attention, facilitating awareness of the availability of treatment and other resources. And whereas, PTSD is treatable, bringing hope to those suffering from this disorder, that peace in their lives can again be realistic. And whereas, our cognizance of the disorder will enable us to be more mindful of those around us who may be suffering from this disorder unknowingly. And that... and our sharing the treatability of this disorder may help them rediscover their better selves. And whereas, being aware of whether we are experiencing any of these symptoms, or having lost interest, or having become emotionally numb, or similar feelings, the addressing of which we ensure our health and well-being. And whereas, in addition to this awareness this month, let us consciously be mindful of and helpful to those among us struggling with this disorder to provide this encouraging message of hope. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Joy Petrel, Mayor of Layton City, along with the Layton City Council, do hereby proclaim June 2021 as Layton City's PTSD Awareness Month. Thank you. Okay, we will now move on to item number four of our agenda, which is our citizens' comments. Anyone who would wish to make a comment, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we'll be happy to hear from you. Okay, seeing that there's none, and I'm seeing the message that we don't have any online either, so we'll go ahead and continue down to our consent items. So our first consent item will be presented by Mr. Gary Crane, which is a Resolution 21-19.
Repeal.
A repeal, yes.
Let me just move forward. So, as you're aware, there are a number of cities in the county involved in the paramedic agreement, and so each of those cities had to sign off on the paramedic agreement. And there were two changes that were actually made by the county, and they're positive changes. The first change was that the county agreed to pay for the services... for additional services that... before the contractor agreement actually kicks in. They're going to go ahead and use some of the federal money that seems to be raining from the skies these days to actually pick up some of that difference. And the other was just a change of the date, a change of the date in the contract, just because of the time period it's actually taken to actually put this whole thing together. But other than that, everything else remains the same. I think we're... I'm getting probably a nod from the city manager, I think we're good with all the other cities and all the other provisions of the agreement remain the same, except for those two, and they're good changes. One just simply changes the date, and the other one actually provides us with more funding to make up the difference, and it's considerable. I can't remember the total amount. Alex probably knows how much that is, but anyway, so those are the two changes that would be made in the agreement. So essentially, it's the same agreement, and staff would recommend approval of that agreement.
Okay. Council, do you have any questions or need further clarification on this? Okay. Well, thank you, Gary. Let's go ahead and move on then to item number B, which is a bid award regarding the fire station, and I'll have our fire chief, Mr. Kevin Ward, present to us.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this is a very exciting day for Layton City and for our fire department as I bring to you Resolution 21-27. This is a bid award to Hogan and Associates Construction for construction of Fire Station 54 at 1325 North Valleyview Drive. In order to maintain our level of service for fire and emergency medical services in our growing city, with an increasing demand on the services and expanding well-architecture interface along the foothills and the hollows, the city has determined the need for its fourth fire station. After years of planning and preparation, and ensuring that the required resources are in place, the city's distributed requests for proposals and bids for the construction of Layton City's fourth fire station at 1325 North Valleyview Drive. Competitive bids were received, and they were reviewed by staff as well as our consultant, Think Architecture. After those evaluations and interviews of those submitting bids, Hogan and Associates Construction was deemed the lowest, most responsive bid. Their guaranteed maximum price is $4,150,000. Staff recommends that Council adopt Resolution 21-27, awarding the bid to Hogan and Associates Construction, and authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute the agreement for the construction of Station 54.
Thank you.
Any questions at all?
Council, do you have any questions? This is exciting news. We really appreciate that, and I know you guys have worked hard on it and definitely vetted all the contractors out there, so I'm pleased with your selection.
Thanks. It's been a long time coming.
That has.
We feel real good about the bid, and we feel real good about the process.
And you want to make us feel real good about the start date?
Yes. We're working with our... the... already talked with... as part of our interview process, we talked about when they're able to start, and we're looking at a start somewhere toward the end of July or 1st of August, and so we'll work with you as terms of an official groundbreaking ceremony. It'll be an exciting day to be able to do that with you.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our consent items. So, Council, I'd take an action regarding our consent items.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 21-26 and Resolution 21-27 as indicated.
Second.
Question on the motion. Do we also have to announce that we're repealing 21-19?
21-19.
That would be great to include in the motion. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I move that we repeal prior Resolution 21-19, approve Resolution 21-26, and Resolution 21-27.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Is there any questions? Okay, then let's go ahead and take a vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Okay, thank you, Council. That concludes item number five on our agenda. We're moving right along, so now we're down to our public hearing portion. Our first item on our public course... of our public hearing is a rezone request, and Mr. Tim Watkins will be presenting that information for us to review.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. For your consideration, this evening is a rezone request for property located at 1464 North Fort Lane. This is in central Layton, just south, not too far south from the accident potential zone area, still some agricultural rural area underway with agricultural uses, and also some surrounding single-family residential development with R-18, R-110, or RS zoning, or agricultural zoning. And this recently came, several months ago, with this R-110 area just on the east side of Fort Lane. That area was rezoned to R-110 to establish some residential lots, and then as part of an ensuing platting, or excuse me, a subdivision process, this agricultural parcel was created of about 5.6 acres, and this is currently under the green belt in the county. And so the applicant is requesting to rezone this area under the green belt to R-110, and this is to have the option to develop in the future. However, in the meantime, they would like to retain all agricultural uses and rights, including not just crop production and so forth, but also the animal keeping. And to accomplish this, staff has worked with the applicant team to draft a development agreement which would establish animal keeping as an existing non-conforming agricultural use. And the terms of this agreement would be that this use would expire at which, at any point, that the boundary lines might be adjusted or subdivision might occur. And with that understanding, staff's recommendation is that the Council adopt Resolution 21-28, approving the development agreement between the city and the Eileen F. Roberts Family Living Trust, and to adopt Ordinance 21-13, approving the rezone request from agriculture to R-110. Be pleased to respond to any questions.
So I just have one... I don't have any problems with the rezon, but it's a future use issue. Turning this into an R-110, obviously, to the south, there's R-110 land, so that would be access to a subdivision. There's a little piece of green still on Fort Lane that I'm assuming will be where the road would be widened or something. How does that little piece get utilized for an entrance into the subdivision if this develops?
Thank you for the question, and I think what the amended zone map will actually reflect is the application of Zone District to include public right-of-way to the center line of the public right-of-way.
Ma'am? Tim, animal keeping, it's in quotations here. What, farm animals, or circus animals, or...
Correct. So that would be the one horse or cow per acre, or I think it was seven smaller animals.
It's like sheep.
Sheep, and yeah. And I think they currently run some sheep on the property.
Okay, does that need to be... because we have different... in the ordinances for farm animals, and should that be part of this agreement, or is it just understood that it's farm animals when it says animal keeping?
And animal keeping is defined as, and referred to in the code, as the farm animals.
Okay, okay, thank you.
It's consistent with that standard. And I did fail to mention the applicant is Kenneth Jepson and family members representing the application.
Any other questions? Seeing that there's none, I'll look for a motion to open our public hearing.
So moved.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so we'll now be willing to take any comments or concerns from the residents regarding the rezone request on 1464 North Fort Lane. Seeing that there's no comments, is there anything online? Nothing online? Very good. Okay, I think I've set the standard here, and I'd like to continue then, that we deal with each of our public hearings separately, so I'll look for a motion to close this public hearing regarding this rezone request.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing. Do you want me to go ahead and do the motion as well?
Sure.
And then I make a motion that we approve the rezone request for 1464 North Fort Lane, rezoning the property from agriculture to R-110, with the mention of the agreement with the existing landowners.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second up.
Okay, it's been moved in second. It's being that this is a public hearing, I'll go ahead and take a roll call vote.
Mayor, did we... did that motion include approval of the resolution?
No, she did not.
I listed the rezon and all the property, but I failed to mention Resolution 21-28.
Thank you, Kim. Okay, so she just mentioned it.
Actually, it's Ordinance 21-13 and Resolution 12... or 21-28.
Okay, thank you. So, Council, I'll go ahead and take a roll call vote on this. We'll start out with Councilmember Thomas.
You sure that's right, ma'am?
Councilmember Dave Thomas.
Yes.
How about Councilmember Thomas, as in Tom Day?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Locksom?
Aye.
And Councilmember Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to item number B, which is again a public hearing regarding our budget, and we'll have Mr. Tracy Probert go ahead and present that information to us. We need a puppet back here, a maestro.
I had that... oh, and then it disappeared.
Can you check on that for me, Tim? Yeah. Oh, yeah. Trying to deal with reading glasses and a screen there. Must hit the wrong button. Okay, Mayor, members of the Council, tonight we're here to hold a public hearing on the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget. It's not the intention to adopt the ordinance tonight, simply to accept public comment. As part of that, I'll just run briefly through a timeline. It is proposed in the budget to have a tax increase related to paramedic service. The county, based on the contract that Mr. Crane had mentioned, intends to discontinue paramedic service in December of 2022, and so they will drop their paramedic tax levy on all properties within the county. And this tax increase that we're tried... required to treat it as a tax increase, because we will pick that levy up on the city tax rate. So property owners will see a net zero effect in Layton City. But still, we have to go through a truth and taxation process by state law. So our timeline to do that is that on the 17th, we will adopt a tentative budget, which will finalize everything in the budget except for the property tax rate and things that are affected by the property tax rate. It's proposed that in the July utility bills, which would be approximately July 8th, delivered to residents and property owners sometime after that, that we put an education piece in there to educate the public as far as why this property tax increase is happening, and that it, in fact, on their bill, it is a net zero effect, and we'll educate them in that piece, and also make them aware of a public hearing on August 5th. The county will then publish two times combined advertisements with all of the entities that will have tax increases, which as of a meeting two days ago, there are 13 entities in the county that are going to have tax increases. Most of those are related to this paramedic issue. They'll publish that twice. We will also publish an notice in the paper on August 1st, advertising our public hearing for August 5th. Depending on what kind of comments we get, we can finalize everything, budget and tax rate and so forth on August 5th, or if you'd like to continue that to August 19th, we can do that. As far as our public hearing this evening, depending on what comments are received, we can close this public hearing, or we can continue that to our meeting on the 17th, I believe it is. So that will be up to you, but my recommendation is that we would open a public hearing at this time.
Okay. Any questions, Council?
Tracy, I just have a couple. So, the county, when they send out the July valuation notices, it'll usually have a proposed budget. Will that line item be removed from that budget?
No, what it will... it will include what we propose the budget to be.
For the city?
For the city.
So the paramedic will then... that percentage will show under the city, and the line item that shows current paramedic services will no longer be on that valuation?
Paramedic service will either no longer be there, or it will be zero.
Okay.
Because I think they do some comparative years, so it should go to zero, and then ours will just be whatever it is. Now, it won't distinguish that we're picking up this paramedic piece, it will just be that our city levy is increasing.
Okay.
And you mentioned that the county's going to do some advertisement and educational pieces as well, to kind of help everyone understand what the purpose of this.
I believe they will be doing that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Council, any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to open up our public hearing regarding our proposed budget for fiscal year 2021-2022.
Madam Mayor, make a motion that we open the public hearing.
Thank you. Okay, this is now a public hearing, so anyone who wished to speak on the subject matter, please do so. You can come up to either one of our mics, state your name and record... your name and address for the record, and we'll be happy to hear from you.
Lived here 54 years. About taxes. For all of my good 600 people out in Bayview subdivision, they kind of depend upon me since I was a Layton City employee for 25 years, and I love to get involved with the people of Layton City. When this gentleman here said, "Whatever it might be, I don't really like those. I'm factual, you know? I'm dedicated, like the city councilmen are. I want to know that all of you will get the amount of money from your Layton citizens in their taxes." And I think that's appropriate, and I will go back and probably tell and inform about 600 to 1,000 of my friends of what is going on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Okay, any other comments? Okay, and I'm not seeing or hearing anything online either. So, being that there's none, Council, I'll look for a motion to close public hearing and take action on the, actually, whether you want to leave this public hearing open or not is really the question.
Yeah, we talked about keeping it open. You'd mentioned closing it, but.
Yeah, and that's why I corrected myself.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I move that we continue the public hearing until Thursday, June 17th, at our next city council meeting.
Second.
Moved in second. This is one that I can say all, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, very good. So we'll keep this public hearing open until our next scheduled council meeting. That concludes our council meeting for this evening, unless anybody has any unfinished business they'd like to bring before us. Seeing that there are none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Okay, thank you, everyone. We appreciate you being here, and have a good evening.